Aren't we all? Everybody had to sit in the back of the class. Yeah, we're live. It's on Facebook. With that being said, guys, welcome to the Woodfin Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, May 2nd, 2023. Thank you all for coming. What we'll do is got an agenda. We're going to go through a few quick items, approval of the agenda, and approval of the minutes from last week, and then we'll go into public comments about what's happening tonight. So bear with us for just a few minutes, and then we'll get to the public comment section. So we'll go ahead and move into the approval of the agenda. We all got it in our emails. Anybody?
I move the approval of the agenda for the planning board for May 2nd, 2023.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Awesome. All in favor? Aye. So I'll carry. Go on to item C, approval of the minutes. Same kind of thing. We got the minutes, and these are the minutes from last month. Any comments or concerns or?
No. You want this one, Dylan? You want me?
Go for it.
I move the approval of the minutes from April 4th, 2023.
Second.
Awesome. All in favor? Aye. Alright, so that one, Carrie. So now we're going to move into the public comment. And what this is, this is going to allow anybody in this room a few minutes to speak on behalf of any concern that they have regarding the town of Woodfin. It looks like we might have had a couple people, or at least one person?
We do not have anything for public comment. We do have one person speaking for us.
Perfect. For one of the public hearings. So what the public comment floor is, anything other than the business items, which is, one is the unfinished business we've got with the Robin Hood Road project, and then the other one is 197 acres off of Monday Cove. So if you hear about those two things, maybe don't speak during the public comment. It looks like I have one person speaking in one of those hearings. So with that being said, we'll open up public comment now. Anybody? Doesn't look like it. So with that, we're going to close public comment section. We're going to move right on down to item E, unfinished business. Ricky, you want to come up and tell us what's happening here?
Yeah, so we do have the attorney representing the applicant for the Robin Hood project with Hatter Sky. They're still working with the neighbors out there in North Asheville, and so they're just asking for a continuous again for additional one more month as they continue their dialogue with that neighborhood. And I believe Jesse is here with us.
My understanding is that...
If you would, name and like of course.
Jesse Swords from Allen-Stallion-Kilborn, turning for Hatter Sky. My understanding is that we would like to actually be taken off the agenda for now, and we will be in touch with the town when we can make the next submission in time to get on either the June or the July, more likely the July, agenda. The reason, again, is working with the neighbors and the CRLU folks. That has been delayed. In fact, until today, it didn't look like they were going to meet with us at all. So there are changes in the works, refinements in the works regardless, but, you know, in light of, you know, meeting with the town, things might change. Not the town, the neighbors, things might change even more. It's just going to take time for the architects and the designers to implement those things before we're ready to resubmit. So this is, you know, for the record, not putting the application on hold in any way, but rather, you know, pursuing our application in accordance with the town's wishes to kind of like reach a compromise with the neighbors and reach, you know, refine the project to something that is, you know, consistent with the town's goals, neighbor's goals, the developer's goals, you know, the best of all worlds that we can make it. So that is our request logistics-wise, in terms of whether it's a continuance to July, or just taking it off the agenda until, you know, we can resubmit. I leave that up to how Shannon wants to do it, unless you all have an opinion?
My opinion was going to be, what's the town's thought? I mean, off the agenda and moving it to July, is there an administrative difference between the two?
I think it's actually easier to take it off the agenda, and then we'll just put it back.
Then essentially to have to do this same process in June?
It doesn't affect the status of the application. It's just a matter of waiting until the applicant is ready.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense to me in light of the changes with the boards, which I don't know enough about yet, but, you know, maybe we'll talk about that, to just to have it off the agenda, and then it'll be on the new board's agenda.
Okay.
Seems cleaner that way, so.
Okay.
So do we have to make a move, motion to do it, or does it have to be?
I think it's fine. Their request is to take it off the agenda for now.
We'll take you off the agenda for June, get with Shannon about getting back on the agenda for July, if that's the timeframe.
Works for me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, so that will bring us to our new business. Ricky?
So before you have a pretty large rezoning tonight. So it's a conditional zoning review for 197.4 acres. It's basically between Monday Cove Road on the north, which is off Rings Creek, and 810 Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. So that's kind of a couple, two and a half miles east of here. The Monday Cove tracks are Bonham County Open Use, and the current Sourwood Inn track, that 100 acres, is already in the town limits, and zoned R43 residential conditional zone, which basically limited that property to the Sourwood Inn, the restaurant, a little bit of parking there. So that's what that CZ was. And so they're requesting to go to community shopping, too, conditional zone. Reason why CS2 is CS2 allows for commercial and residential uses, like single-family. Standard conditional, excuse me, standard community shopping does not allow any residential use types. So again, here's the zoning map. The purple area is the R43 CZ within the town limits. Elk Mountain Scenic Highway is on the very bottom of the screen down there, and the gray parcels to the north are the Monday Cove tracks. They're about 97 and a half acres. The very top center of the screen is Monday Cove Road, the dead end. Here's a general aerial of the region, almost to say. As you can tell, it's pretty much mountainous, wooded, and there's some smaller farms as you go downhill toward Rings Creek itself. And we'll get into the site plan, but the things to note on the site plan is that there is an existing 14-unit lodge, what is known now as the Sourwood Inn. They're proposing the addition of 60-floor guest cabins. There's a restaurant right at the inn, and then there'll be like a retail services building. I think they kind of called it the Welcome Center or check-in. There's an event pavilion, 24 spa treatment rooms that are kind of scattered about. Retaining walls are limited to 12 feet in height in steep slope. They have some walls that are kind of doubled up, or truck, fire truck turnarounds that reach up to 24 feet in height. They're internal to the site, but they are taller than what we allow. A parking reduction down to 115 parking spaces. And then as far as the residential component goes, it's 36 houses and two ADUs, of which eight of them would be maybe used for short-term rental, and then six of them they're going to designate as guest houses. I think those are dedicated, is what I understand, and we can ask the applicant tonight to clarify, but I believe it's dedicated lodging. Any questions so far? We're moving through?
The retaining walls are already on site?
No.
Okay.
They're proposed.
Forty-three as a designation, would that really allow the restaurant? I mean, I...
It was kind of a...
I realize it's...
Yeah. It's kind of, I think it's kind of unconventional. Normally, you would use a zoning designation that would allow restaurant and lodge, so it would more likely should have been like a CS CZ and not a R43. But whatever it is, we're going to be, that'll be cleaned up with this, if it moves forward.
Can you refresh my memory on the SCR, because we recently had a change to short-term rentals?
Yeah.
Does Woodfin allow? Could they have eight short-term rentals?
Well, community shopping, they can.
Yeah, it's like a lodging, yeah, community shopping, but that would be, hotels, motels are allowed in community shopping, so it's part of that CZ.
Sure.
So here's kind of the overall schematic site plan. Keep in mind that south is right, and left is north for orientation. I'm going to probably back out of this here just a second. Let me go back down, just so we can see. Just for, let me do this. But anyways, give you this error here, and go to work for me. Try to do something. I'll go back to the bigger site plan. So this is the general orientation here. So the commercial side of that development, most of it's to the right, the Sourwood Inn half of the project. Majority of the single-family will be to the left of the northern tracks. And it's hard to tell, but along this kind of, I hate to get hurt the screen, but along the southern end here, the bottom of the screen, you'll see some black asterisks. That's the units they've identified for, you know, lodging or short-term rental, just to clarify that. And I'm going to move through some sections. I've snipped in a little bit closer here. So in here, you see more of the Sourwood Inn. You see the approach road coming in off the right from Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. There's a parking area, the lodge, and some spa units. And then the white dashed lines are the trails, or little former logging roads. They're going to kind of put down crushed gravel, what I understand, to be more pedestrian path, or like cart, golf cart paths. Not really for vehicles, but, you know, if you need to get an ambulance down, I understand they could do it. And then you see some more scattered cabins. They're a little bit larger boxes here to the center-right. Okay, for the kind of southwestern portion of the, you have more guest cabins kind of in the center here. Kind of lower left, you see again those houses with the little black star asterisk on it. That's the lodging units, houses, full houses. And the furthest right is the exhibit, excuse me, is the event center with a parking area, and it's a 2,400 square foot event center. And then that's toward the exit back out to Elk Mountain Scenic So for the Monday Cove tracks, this is where that 36 or so dwellings are at. As you can see, they're kind of scattered toward the western side of the slope of the property, kind of high up in elevation. The Weaverville Watershed tract is bottom of the screen here, which is west. And the far left of the screen and north is Monday Cove Road. You can see the roadway climbs up out of Monday Cove, kind of winds up in there, and provides the through access from Monday Cove Road back to Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. They are proposing some gates at each end to control traffic for residents only. But the Rings Creek Fire Department, we did reach out to them, and they also were in contact with the Kevin Tipton, with the Fire Marshal of Bonham County. And so they're going to be upgrading that roadway to provide at least emergency service access from Monday Cove, Rings Creek Valley, to Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. So right now, there's no connection that's drivable at all. So the one benefit we could see from emergency services would be more direct connection between that mountain ridge road and the Rings Creek Valley to the north.
Now, basically, with the residential area, they're going to probably be selling lots for people to build homes, but do I recall correctly that they actually still have to get a permit to build?
Yeah.
The individual homes?
Yeah.
But, so does that come kind of second to the other, the initial buildup of the spa area? Do you know, or is it all going to happen at the same time?
I think there's going to be a kind of extended timeline. I know they're going to get started with the commercial side first, but we can ask the applicant here tonight what their timing is. But you're correct, each individual home would have to get a zoning permit from our office, and we'd have to look at it for height and make sure it complies with this plan if approved. And that's why I think the CZ conditions say home sites as opposed to houses, so it was kind of clarified that it's a house site. Before I move on to modifications, the other question, it's a big site plan, and a lot of elements. I'll make sure I don't go too quickly.
Right, right.
As far as other highlights to note, the grading limits, they will comply with the grading limits for steep slope. So Bonham County and Woodfin's steep slope regulations are about the same, 15% grading area. Our condition in the Exhibit D is 13% limit, and then there's an 8% limit on impervious area, which is your roads, roof lines, patios, and they're meeting that as well. So they're going to comply with our steep slope standards voluntarily. A couple elevations provided met our height limits as well, of 35 feet. So there's...
So do the steep slope areas also involve a lot of the proposed residential?
The entire tract, yeah, everything's above 2,200 feet.
Yeah.
Everything's above 20% slope, so the entire parcel is completely subject.
So when they come in individually to, you know, I guess, to request a building permit, we'll be dealing with the steep slope issues then, as far as residential?
Yeah, we'll be looking at for height. We'll be looking to make sure if it's over 35%, there's a geotech for that house. We'll verify, you know, do they have the required on-site parking? Does it match the site plan that you're looking at substantially?
And the parking that you were talking about does not relate to the residential area, right? That's really more the spa area?
It's more the commercial side, yeah. There's no congregate parking or parking lot for those there. I'm not trying to rush you, I just...
I know. It is a huge project.
It is. It's a big one. Do you want me to, I can go over to the actual site plan submittal. Do you want to look at that any real quickly before we move through modifications, Glenda? Takes a minute for it to refresh up here. Here's your pointer. Get this, exit this here, and then we'll... Expand this a little bit here. So that's the overall conceptual we're looking at. There's some individual sheets. Is there a specific area you're interested in at all? I mean, I can show you specific areas, like the houses or the retaining wall locations, if you're interested.
I'm interested to see the retaining wall locations and how many kind of linear feet of that we're talking about.
Should get down here to the L.
And any sort of like site sections or kind of visibility studies of that retaining wall?
We don't have anything of that, but I will say that the, let me just zoom in here real quick.
And understanding how that steps back, right?
So there is one double stack retaining wall here.
Okay.
Another in this area, and you'll notice that they're for the fire truck turnaround.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And here, so it's not a big area.
So they're really just building a space into the side of the mountain to turn a truck around?
Yeah. And there's a couple in here that might be where it kind of V's in. But the general motion is that the road is almost at the ridge line, so south of the road, or on the bottom half of the screen, that falls away to the west into Weaverville's watershed. The other direction falls to the east here, or down toward that blue line at the top. So the retaining walls will be facing into the site. So you would be, they wouldn't really be looking at anybody's house, not anybody's downtown development.
Has Weaverville seen this plan, and up against their watershed? I mean, are they aware of it?
They're aware of it. We've mentioned it to them. There's no public access into their watershed, and I think the applicants are aware that that's not part of their additional extended area for their guests to, you know, venture into the Weaverville watershed at all. So as you can tell, those retain walls, we just want to make sure it's known, but there are, you know, a few areas. It's not like hundreds and hundreds of linear feet. It's just a couple places to facilitate that fire truck turnaround, which is required.
Sorry, on this map, I lost my bearings. Where's Elk Mountain Scenic?
Elk Mountain would be back.
Over here.
To the far right. And I can roll back up here. It's, it takes a minute to refresh up, but give it just a second. When it comes up here, just a second. Sorry, it takes a minute for this. It's about a 35 meg file. So there's, we were looking at this right here, Dylan.
Mm-hmm.
So those hammerheads or T-turnarounds.
Right.
And then Elk Mountain is back in this direction right here.
Because there's so much rely, I mean, total reliance on wells and septic, is there any issue related to the proximity of properties in this residential area especially?
As far as that, well, those wellheads, they're pretty big wellheads. I know they had a study done. Rob might tell you how big that is. Rob, you might have to answer that. Do you know what your diameter is on your wellheads? Because that 200-foot radius?
200-foot radius for a shared well.
Okay. Yeah. So right in there, 200-foot radius.
That's one shared well for the whole project?
No, there's multiple.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll point out bigger, there's one here.
All the circles, right?
All the circles. There's a second one.
So each house does not have to have a well? It's, okay.
They've got some community wells, so there's at least two here. And so those dashed areas as well, just like this, and you can see very clear, that's the SSDI septic field, that subsurface drain field. So they're not cutting all the trees. They're just kind of doing a slight trench just to get below the soil.
And that's a community system, too, correct?
Believe you. And he can answer that a little bit better.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me try to roll back down through here.
So there's no public through access through Monday Cove to Elk Mountain? It's just private?
Correct. None is planned, yeah. None is planned for public access. And I did receive one call late this afternoon about a neighbor of Monday Cove, and that was kind of the concern, was, you know, either the number of houses being built and/or through vehicular traffic as a cut-through. They had planned to be here at the town council meeting, but that was one of their biggest concerns, and making sure there was emergency services could get into this area if there was numerous houses. There's a closer view of some of the guest houses that's proposed. One of the other conditions I'll just mention while we're over here looking at this one, is that community shopping, when you're adjacent to a residential district, and we consider open use of residential district in Bonham County, you're required to have that 15-foot screening yard. As you can tell, the grading for the existing gravel or logging road is going to basically come up to the property line. And so in this area, there's probably some trees that'll remain, maybe, maybe not, but it gets really close. So one of the modifications is to reduce that 15-foot buffer to, as shown on the plan, and retain the trees that exist outside the limits of disturbance for the road improvement. Knowing that this is the Weaverville watershed that's got a conservation easement that will not be developed.
And I'm sure, I was going to say, I'm sure this is a, but would we have to, in the future, if this plan moves forward, and we ask for that conditional buffer, or we say we, do we have to send out a notice to the Weaverville watershed people and say, hey, do you guys approve of us changing our buffer zone from 15 feet to eight?
That's part of this CZ application. We notify all adjacent owners. So we, I made sure that when I mailed that notice, I actually sent it to their PO box as opposed to the rural route four that was on the tax card, because there's not a rural route. So that's part of this process. Now, if there was to be five years from now, a change to this plan, it would have to come back to be modified. So if, for some reason, it didn't move forward, or somebody wanted to build an extra 20 houses, you couldn't just do that. You'd have to come back before this board for another CZ hearing. Toggle back over to, is there other parts of this site plan you would like to look at? I know a couple of y'all looked at a while.
I think I'm good on the site plan. I'm, at whatever time we get there, I'm ready to hear from...
Okay.
The developers, but...
All right. I don't want to belabor it then. So just kind of the highlights on the modifications are, there's sidewalks would be required as part of a CZ. There's no sidewalks out there. There's nothing on Elk Mountain Scenic Highway. There is nothing on Monday Cove Road for miles. But they are providing trails between all their uses, between the hotel and the residential spa areas and the event center, so you can be able to walk from one place to the other. The reduction in the parking, we mentioned, from 145 to 115. Steep slope limits you to one principal building on a tract. As you can tell, there's multiple principal buildings on the Sourwood Track or on the Monday Cove tracks. The retaining walls, 24 feet, and then I just mentioned the reduction in the required screening yard along the western property boundary, which is the Weaverville watershed boundary line. And I will stop there before we go to the recommendation side, because I know y'all are interested in speaking or hearing from the applicant. So I'll be right here.
Awesome. So just so everybody knows, we're going to hear from the applicant, so we can hear what they have to say, and then we'll go to people for the public hearing that would like to ask questions as well, if that's okay. So applicant, if you would step forward first, and then if you would, just state your name and...
Yes, you can drive. I'm just going to get back over here to this one, and you can roll up and down if you need to.
Great, thanks, Ricky. My name's Rob Doll. I'm a landscape architect with Find the Line Studios. We're based out of Asheville and been working with this client for probably close to a year now on these plans. I worked for the previous owner on the Sourwood, so
very familiar with the property. I'm going to introduce the team we have here with us. We have John Kennard from Brooks Engineering. We have Brian Golden from Van Winkle. We have Mitesh Ruchada and Samir Levani from the development team. And then we have Joel Link, who's our environmental engineer. And then Ainsley Mumford, who works with me at Find the Line Studios. Tell me where to start, where do you, where do you want me to dig into this? I'm happy to sort of go page by page. You know, a couple of sort of big picture items that I would like to point out is that we're.
That's a good, let's start there.
Yeah, we're essentially reusing all existing roads that are on this site. So the only, there's some portions of kind of what we call that ridge road that is going to provide through access that is new construction. But every other road on there, you, I could drive my Toyota Tacoma on right now, today. And so part of our sort of development strategy on this was to not go in and have to create that much more disturbance. And I think, I want to hit some big picture items and I want Samir and Mitesh to sort of just give you some background of their vision of what this is. Because I think a lot of people look at it and they don't quite grasp exactly. I mean, it's a health and wellness retreat. So part of what makes this successful for their program is that immersion in nature. And so then that to us was giving us the directive of like, okay, we're going to try to preserve as much as we can so that you still have that experience. As Ricky said, kind of, you know, the idea of the buffer against Weaverville, I mean, I think it's almost, would be worse if we had to go plant a bunch of holly trees on that buffer than to leave it what it is now, which is a fairly healthy forest against a large parcel that will never be developed. Again, the retaining walls was directed through, gosh, six months worth of conversations with Kevin Tipton in Reims Creek to figure out what they were, what they would allow for access through there so that we weren't doing 22-foot roads with curb and gutter. Again, just trying to keep that limits of disturbance reduced. Ricky mentioned, so the existing roads that go, has anybody been to the inn? Are you guys familiar with it at all? Okay.
Familiar with it, I just haven't been there.
I've been there, where the Sowerwood Inn is. I, I'm not familiar with the Monday Cove site.
Okay, cool, at least you know, I mean, you know, those roads getting down in there, they're pretty windy and small. So there are improvements to widen those. Improved drainage, improved the turning radius at the bottom. You know, all things that Kevin, you know, needed to see for them to be able to support the project. We've also talked to NC DOT, Nick Dorado, who has, you know, done a cursory review on this. So we'll obviously would have to put in full permit drawings to him as well. So when you think about sort of like what the inn is doing now, it's sort of an expansion of that. But, you know, kind of think of it as like a deconstructed spa, so the complete opposite of what the Grove Park is. So these are small, very unique experiences that happen in little pockets along these existing roads. And then sort of talking about some of the guest houses and all, I think, as Ricky said, to me, the most important thing is we're asking for a modification for multiple units on one parcel. But we're doing that because if we had to strictly follow this steep slope ordinance, it would result in more cumulative disturbance across the entire site. So because we're like on this screen, able to sort of drop these houses right off the existing road, then now, you know, these houses have 40-foot, 50-foot driveways instead of doing a traditional subdivision. And now each of these houses has, you know, 200 to 300 feet. So it's sort of the cluster development idea that allows us to bring the entire project, you know, and we're not 0.1% away from being compliant. We're very compliant with the disturbance and the impermeable on this. I know you had mentioned kind of like visual impact en masse thing. I don't know if you did see, maybe I can get to them. So we did, we took our site plan and include the walls and then had 3D models created out of them to get, you know, as real of an idea as we can at this point. So this is showing you the perspective. So this would be like up towards the parkway looking back.
And all the red dots in there, that's the roofs.
That's the roof line.
That's correct.
And as Ricky said, you know, those would be individual home permits and would also be subject to permitting in terms of, Glenn, I think your question was, you know, they have to meet steep slope, but the limits of disturbance is going to be predetermined based on this submittal. So they would have to submit a plan.
Right.
That shows that house being built within this limits of disturbance.
Right. And are you doing that simultaneous with sort of upgrading the whole spa stuff? I mean, are you going to be doing both at the same time?
I'm gonna let Samir and Mitesh maybe answer that because I think you guys know even more than I do as to sort of what that timing might look like. And maybe, do you guys want to?
Yeah, absolutely, we're looking at.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, you're getting ready to get, I tried to warn you not to sit in the back.
Okay, yeah, I know, we're sitting back in front. So, hi, my name is Mitesh Ruchada. My background is in like wellness and hospitality. Super excited about this project. I think it, from our purpose, we think that human beings should be connected to nature and that's a huge modality in like healing. So we use a concept like nested. So the homes and the treatment rooms, like if they're nested in the woods and you kind of have this like visual, like trees and things of that nature, we think that facilitates a healing process. So super clean food, you know, making sure that it's like organic, breath work, meditation, yoga, it might sound a little woo-woo, but it works. We've been doing it for a long period of time so people can really like de-stress and kind of put themselves like back together. And if they're living on the residential side, it's the same value set that we're looking to do here. So we're super excited. As for the timeline, we're probably looking at about a six-month or 12-month stagger. But we like to do it simultaneously so then people can understand that if I'm going to live in this kind of very like eco-friendly architecture, I also have the ability to frequent the spa and actually have, you know, have some type of membership where they can get like a massage or they, we do this thing where you drip oil on their forehead and they kind of get totally blissed out. So there's all kinds of cool things. So it's going to be about a six to a 12-month stagger.
One question, I have to reach someone. So how many total keys are there being proposed for the property?
It ends up a total of 73. So there's 14 now.
That's including the family home sites?
That's lodges, that would be the existing lodge, new cabins and guest homes.
Okay.
So like Ricky said, those, the six guest homes, and it really is a dividing line of between Sowerwood and Monday. Everything on Sowerwood is sort of what we consider hospitality. And everything on Monday is what we consider sort of single-family residential for lack of a better category to push it into.
Cool.
And then the idea of the additional STRs on Monday is really kind of a buffer for, you know, big weekends, holidays, that you may have a real influx of folks there that then they could use those short-term so they sort of buffer that key count. Because it's not a huge key count for something.
Right.
For a project like this.
What is the purpose of doing the short-term rental homes versus calling them guest cabins?
Well, I think for the stuff on Monday, if someone owns that, that maybe is not planning to live in that full-time, then that opens.
So the STRs would be sold as short-term residences too? But could, but would have a short, or would have a permit to short-term rental?
Right, I mean, it could be, I mean.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be eight units managed by Sowerwood Inn, in other words, you know, filling up guest cabins.
Correct, the six on the Sowerwood portion obviously fall within the hospitality. And then the one on the others, I mean, they could remain in some common ownership, but they could be sold.
I'm just, just curious, yeah.
Somebody was asking about sections. So we took these sections, so this is up at, the top one is up at the event center, which is up at the ridge, kind of, you know, where the cell tower is, it's kind of down below the cell tower. Just to show, you know, that we can meet that 35-foot maximum. I also think too, you know, when you talk about just kind of big picture, I guess two other firms I didn't mention, you may know Brent Campbell Architecture from here in town. And then also Olson Kundeck are the two architectural firms that are currently consulting on it. So this was kind of look and feel. I think it gives that sort of light-hand touch on the land. Spine treatment, events, dining, accommodations. So you'll see on a lot of these with the cabins too, a lot of it's on peer construction so that we're not building big sub-basements. So this is concrete, steel, glass. That's up in the air, gives you that treehouse feeling, keeps you from having to run huge machinery all over the mountain to do the construction. I think that might have been all of those. This was road classification. We put this together for Ricky and for Kevin. So the yellow, again, everything you see in yellow except for a section from like right here to right there is an existing road. So that's the new section. Everything in blue, essentially initially it's used as construction access because we've got to get deliveries and everything to these units. And then we essentially deconstruct those back to, Kevin has agreed to a 12-foot drivable surface for emergency services. So the idea is when construction over and we back out, all these blue lines become cart paths, you know, e-bikes.
Some sort of modial service, correct.
Can you take that arrow and show me where the plan is for short-term rentals on the residential side?
Let's see, actually, let me go to the one that has, oh, well, maybe I won't take so long to load. So they start this one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So these two are two standalone lots that exist in there now. And so that would be the two ADUs that would be allowed by, used by right by Buncombe County.
Well, I hope you plan to be really upfront with the people that are buying permanent housing about where your short-term rentals are because they're pretty, they can, especially those four-bedroom ones that you're creating. You may not always have the kind of clientele you expect.
I think, I think that that's going to be a pretty highly curated short-term rental experience that would be controlled by.
So you're not listing it on the main websites or anything?
I don't think that's the intent at all.
No, you're saying no, okay.
It's not part essential. It's anything but. This is where you come to detox, not to tox.
We're actually, it's going to be like an adult facility and it's going to be super quiet is what we're, have to go for to pull off what we're doing. So there's no kids cannonballing into the pools and like for that would like destroy the whole reason people be staying in our residences and why they would be coming for a healing experience, so.
Do you have other projects like this currently that are operating? Or have you operated a similar type facility to? I guess to, for lack of a better term, to say, you know that the people are going to travel to experience. Asheville is a very, you know, encompassing community, especially when it comes to the healings. But do we think people will travel for this experience is kind of where I'm coming from.
So at the property currently right now, we just, without doing any marketing, we just turned on the availability for this. And just, we have 30,000 people on, you know, our email list. And then we have some other sister companies. And then we have access to about another, you know, 100,000 email list. So, I mean, we've been sold out since we opened and people are absolutely loving it. And then we've actually done, we had a, like a rundown facility in New Mexico that we had taken over the operations. And it was a, it was just not very well put together and we were pretty much running full there as well. And then our hospitality background, we've done a lot of like, we've done spas and multi, you know, you know, used developments of like hotels, restaurants. So our background hospitality is, you know, for about 20 years, we've been in an industry. But, you know, everyone has a midlife crisis and now we want to do something that really helps humanity. And it's like, so our midlife crisis is this and we're really excited about it.
And last question for you probably. Average price points of the single-family residence?
Average price?
Just like roughly, what are we talking, like a 2,000 square foot home, 1,500 square foot home?
I think the range in the program was like 1,500 up to maybe 3,500 max. But I don't know that we could put a price point on them yet.
Oh, yeah.
The idea essentially is that, you know, they're, they're controlling design and like these are not going to go, likely not going to go on the market.
And like.
This is.
So people that are already very familiar and really into the healing and kind of some of the stuff they're into, like, I mean, Rob told me he wants a place, you know? So like, I think that the demand already for people with like life values is, is already pretty much there, yeah.
And that's why, that's why you don't see a typical subdivision line because it's, think of it as like a condo. It's almost like a zero lot line. And all these houses are going to comply with a steep slope. But then there's like all the rest of that that's in common area, essentially all works like a condo does. And that, that's where they're able to sort of retain ownership of the look and feel and who's in there. And that's why I think that the short-term rental would be, this is not popping up on, on Airbnb.
I hope you're right.
What is Olson Kundeck's involvement with the project?
They have been out here, they were out here last week, week before. So I've worked with Kundeck on a couple of other projects and really felt like this would be like right up their alley if you're familiar with Olson Kundeck and what they do. And so currently, you know, they're, I would say that likely their focus will be on the hospitality and spa because that's kind of one of their sweet spots. And then also sort of now coming in with the architectural layer on top of the master plan. We've kind of been working in the dirt and now bringing on an architect. There's also Dick Clark Architects out of Austin, Texas has been involved as well. They're working on the plans for the renovations that are, would be like immediate phase one of the existing launch. And so we think there'll be a collaboration between those two and locally, you know, local architect directly as well.
Both firms are super excited about the value set of how we're building and so they're really excited about the project.
You mentioned phase one, how many total phases?
Do you have a, I don't.
I think there'll be two phases generally. There'll be, yeah, we're still figuring out some of the nuances of that.
So one of the conditions that's in the report, you know, was that we did ask for a five-year term on the CZ just because as you can tell, this is a significant project.
Yep.
And so to be limited by, I think the standard is three was a bit overwhelming for us. But yeah, I think the team's committed to see it through.
Any other questions for these guys? Okay, awesome, appreciate it guys.
Appreciate it.
So now we're going to go to the public portion of this. So we have Bruce, if you want to come up and state your name into the microphone, you can, you can be our first speaker.
Very good, thank you for allowing me some time. My name is Bruce Pickler and my wife and I, Robin, who couldn't be here tonight, we bought property on Monday Cove about five years ago. And we've had an opportunity to live right next to where this planned project is going to be. And when we first started, we go up there and we hike your property just about every week. My wife does it more often than I do. And it's just phenomenally beautiful property. And we have known since we moved there that at some point, somebody would come in and buy the property and want to develop it. And it's my understanding that through the years that there have been several attempts to buy and build on the land. But they have fallen through for a number of different reasons and so I don't know what those reasons were. But our feeling is that if somebody is going to buy this land and improve it, this is the type of development that we want. We feel that these folks are going to be wonderful neighbors. And their, their premise, their, their thought process behind this is just what this land needs. We don't need somebody to come in and mow down thousands of trees and put in sidewalks and sewers and things like that. They're going ahead and they're going to develop this into the theme of the area, the feeling of the area, very eco-friendly, respectful of the land. And so we support it. We're a little nervous about it and that's why I'm here tonight. And, but I do.
Might not be able to hike anymore.
But we, I do have a few questions if I can address them to you folks. First of all, I'm assuming that the creek that runs out of the Sowerwood Inn down through the residential area is going to remain untouched. And, and that was my assumption. We hiked up there, they had gone through and they had put flags up there just to have an idea as to where the springs are and where the creeks are flowing. And we felt that was just a really good sign. So we're assuming that. The question that I have for you is construction traffic. Will it come off of Monday Cove or Elk Mountain Scenic Highway?
I think probably, I think it's going to be shared. I don't think it's going to be like, this is the construction entrance. Because obviously if work's happening on the inn, it makes sense to come off of mountain. You know, obviously to work on the individual home site, it's going to make sense. You know, obviously to work on the individual home site, it's going to make sense to come off Monday Cove.
And, and I have no problem with that. Of course, there's a modest amount of construction traffic on Monday Cove already. The thing that I'm concerned about is that the Monday Cove Road proper is pretty fragile. It's kind of deteriorating and we're starting to see some erosion of, of the sides of the roads and it just needs, so I'm not sure what I'm asking there. I just want you to be mindful that the, the road is, is not in perfect shape and, and we hope that the heaviest of the construction traffic can come off of scenic highway, just because I know that that road is in much better shape. Are you, for the residential area, are you going to have any CCRs or HOAs up there?
They're, they're just by the nature of like a sort of condo model, there will certainly be either property owner association or homeowners association that will manage that common area.
Okay.
But I'm not going to speak you on your app. I would imagine you guys would have severely strict CCRs that just make sure that the mission and the vision stay true regardless of what happens to everybody.
Sure. And, and one of the big things, of course, is noise. We don't want, you know, we love the peace and quiet. We don't want four-wheelers tearing up all through that area and generating a lot of noise. We like the peace and quiet there.
I know what you're going to say. I mean, this comes back, this is the whole demo.
Yeah.
So we do have a little bit of challenge of picking up audio, so if you could just say all of your questions and Mr. Bill come up and answer the questions.
Okay.
And there may be other questions. I don't know if anybody else intends to speak, but that would be the preferred. Sorry, I thought it was one question.
It led into, it led into several questions there. Okay. So if you want to address through the microphone, the HOA and the noise ordinance, if there is one?
Yeah, so I just think it goes back to the idea of being nested and this is a place of healing and naturally those things happen better in quiet environments. And so what I was going to say, in speaking for Mitesh and Samir, I'm pretty sure that that's, that your answer would be that the idea is to keep those down in order to foster the entire experience.
Very good. And the project, if this is approved and you start developing home sites, how soon would that take? How soon until that would start?
I think we'd like to get the horizontal going probably like six or 12 months.
Okay.
Naturally after that, the development of the home.
Sure. Okay. That's it. Those were all my questions. You know, once again, my wife and I, we've spent a lot of time talking about this and the, the neighborhood is, they're not really all that thrilled about a lot of development on Monday Cove Road. But there is some development that's taking place at other adjacent properties and we feel that this is going to fit in. So from our perspective, we'd like them to be our neighbors.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else that didn't sign up that would want to speak on?
I do have a question.
Come on up to the microphone, tell us who you are. Tell us your question.
Get out outside.
My name is John Stahl. I live at Wendy Ridge Trail, across the street from your development. My concern is when you, you told us there was going to be no through access from Monday Cove to Elk Mountain, Elk, right? You said it would be gated. Where do the short-term rental people, will they go down Monday Cove to get out or will they go out Elk Mountain?
Sure. So I think, again, going back to sort of how the place functions, we see 90% of, I mean, one of the reasons to actually cut the road through was so that homes here, so Samir and Mitesh have a home here and they're here at work all day, that they don't have to drive 35 minutes around the mountain to get to their house.
Right.
To allow them to come through. So because all of this is...
I'm not worried about them. I'm worried about your short-termers because what I, what I can, they're going to come off of?
I would, I would assume that they would be coming off Elk Mountain. Because they, again, this is not just a short-term rental open for anybody. It's only open for people who are coming to Soho Mountain Healing Retreats.
Today. Today. I've done short-term rental, signed how it works out. Sometimes you're going to rent it to whoever will give you money.
Yeah.
And if you rent it to a bunch of motorcycle guys, they're going to come right by my driveway to get to the parkway. You're going to ruin my nice peace and quiet.
Well, if I'm going to tell, tell the future, we'd all be...
But it's a possibility.
It is.
It's a possibility. I'm not cool with that. But thanks for answering the question.
Sure.
It could be addressed in restrictive covenants that are going to apply to the development itself. If motorcycles are the, are the concern. I don't know that, that it could be.
Just for the record, thank you. Before Shannon tells you.
Sorry. Brian Golden, attorney with Van Winkle Law Firm. I represent the developers in this. And, and one of the questions was, could there be a condition imposed that would limit if, if Mr. Stahl was your last name?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if it was the motorcycles that he didn't want there, certainly in a, an association, the restrictive covenants could limit the type and kind of vehicles that are coming and going. So that could be a condition, but that would be inside the CCRs, not something that, that this board would impose on the list that I think that Ricky had worked on and gave you all. But those concerns can be addressed for sure.
It can be addressed and will be addressed for two different issues.
Well, so, so when I say that, today was the first time that we've heard that you have a concern about motorcycles driving up and down the road that would be accessing our site. I'm assuming motorcycles drive up and down that road quite often.
They do. It's very annoying that way to be concerned.
Right, right. And so we can't say that we're going to add more noise than already exists. What we are saying is because of your concern, this board just gives a recommendation to town council, right? And so we still, we're here gathering the information from you. We've just heard that you want to limit the noise that is accessing or the noise coming from the folks that are accessing our development. And so what we're saying is we can consider ideas on how to address that. But I, but I don't have the magic pill right now. Rob said you can't see into the future. I, I can't either. But we're, we're, we're hearing your concern and certainly the, the issue already exists. You know it exists, you don't like it. We don't want to create more of, of that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it, John. Anybody else?
Is it okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what we're here for. Just make sure you state your name.
My name is Jerome McCardle. I live on Monday Cove Road. I have more of a concern than a question. I know where that road empties on the Monday Cove Road. It is a double S-turn, very tight turns and about a 300-foot drop through the S-turns. I'm concerned about how much traffic is going to be on there and what the effect is going to have on that road. Bruce mentioned that the road is starting to, you know, cave in in the road and I think a lot of traffic is going to hurt Monday Cove Road. Just my two cents, that's all.
I drive that turn every day and...
Sure. And that's the one, in talking, so I told you, we talked to Nick Dorado at NC DOT. And so this is not a permit drawing by any means. So actual civil engineering, John Kennard's going to get, have a great time working with Nick Dorado on making sure that all the entries, all the three access points meet NC DOT standards. And that has to do with site triangles, that angle that the drive hits the primary NC DOT drive.
That's pretty steep.
So, right, and I mean, we anticipate there being work done in there for sure. So that's, that's kind of where going from, you know, this, this high-level CZ permit translates down to every house having to have a permit, every building having to have a permit, every driveway having to have a permit. So all those things would be addressed to the standard that everyone is held to, which is NC DOT. Now, can I say that NC DOT is going to hold a standard that's going to make you perfectly happy? I don't know the answer to that, but I do know we have to meet NC DOT standards.
Is Mundy Road controlled by DOT or is it a Woodfin Street?
It's, it's both of them are state roads.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right, with that then, we're going to close public hearing. We appreciate it, everybody's coming up, talking about it. Do you guys have any comments about it? Discussion you want to have?
No, I think the modifications requested are pretty...
You think they're okay, especially the one about multiple buildings on steep slope? That bothers me a little.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, you know, a pretty thoughtful approach to, to this piece of land. The, the two main concerns I did have were, were the retaining walls and elimination required screening because I'm kind of familiar with that. I mean, I grew up in Beaver Dam, so, you know, I looked up at that. But hearing say that, that, you know, planning those hollies might be more intrusive, kind of alleviates that. Plus, I think the retaining wall, like the linear, linear footage is so minimal and it's just for, for emergency services, turnarounds, like, I, I think that they've addressed those. But things like reducing parking and everything in a site like that, I see as a good thing.
And my, my initial thought just on the multiple building sites, or multiple buildings on one site kind of deal. In, in terms of, of affecting land, if, if it can be structurally sound, you're obviously undisturbing more land if you can put two units right next to each other.
Okay.
So I think if they're under the percentages on that other stuff, that, that part doesn't bother me so much. I did the, the short-term rental house versus the having the four, or the four-bedroom cat or hotel rooms. If, if they're going to be run and, and operated by the development, why don't we just call those bigger hotel guest rooms, you know, kind of deal versus, you know?
Yeah, I would agree.
Versus a short-term rental because as you have just heard in this meeting alone, short-term rental is just a huge buzzword. And I think if, if there's a little more structure into how that is, it's going to be totally, maybe it's, it's for the family that's bigger or the group that's coming that's a little bit bigger that they want to come and they just don't have enough room in those four-bedroom guest houses. They can just, they're going to be putting a larger house versus a short-term rental that might hit Airbnb or HomeAway or, or anything like that. So maybe think about something, just a way to, to make it sound more inviting, I guess.
And healing.
I don't mind, I don't, don't think that it's a bad idea. It's just a, a bigger property to, to what they're already proposing.
Yeah.
Okay. Ricky, what's the town feel?
Well, we're kind of supporting it, but we, we also I think had some of the same concerns y'all did. And that's why if you see him blue up here, you don't have to read that part, but it's a kind of a placeholder for you that any additional conditions that y'all feel may need to be addressed as part of this CZ request if you're moving to approve it. For recommending that approval, kind of rolling back up here to what we recommended, we were kind of supporting it, but we, we also recognize there are some natural terrain issues out there and it's a unique area being a satellite annexation or satellite city limits for the town of Woodfin. So it's a lot more unique circumstances than what you find here in the French Broad Valley itself. So I'll kind of leave it to y'all here to deliberate. I do have on the next one, those five points from the conference of plan.
I printed it.
That's fine. That's fine. But Shannon wanted to test around that last one.
Still on track.
I think it works pretty good. But if you want to look at those and see if y'all agree with all those, before you move toward a motion, I can roll back to that in a minute.
So just, just to also clarify that if you are considering additional conditions, those would have to be things that the petitioner, the applicant have to agree to.
Right.
So you would want to suggest something, let them consider it and, you know?
If, if the, if the buzzword of, you know, of short-term rental is sort of not feeling good and it would be better just to show all of those units as short-terms only through the umbrella of the hospitality unit, that is, we're okay with that. Because that is, that is the intent.
I think we all, we're, we all understand that at least from the sound of the project, your intent is not to have a partying weekend up there. That's just not what the development is, is for. But I think we also all can kind of agree that people get around things sometimes, you know? And if it's controlled from the inside as a, oh, you need a bigger space for your group of people coming, we've got you covered on site, then to me, it, it, it's more appealing. I don't know about these guys.
Well, I also think you're, the people you want to sell permanent properties to are going to be much happier if they don't think they're living amongst short-term rentals.
Sure. Yeah. And I think, I think it's, some of it's coming down to just like the gaveller. Yeah, some of it's... Because I think in our head, we're saying, what we want is what you're saying. And I think we just assign short-term rental as like the token word.
I think that's what's happening too.
But really, if we, if we're all okay calling it a hospitality guest house, knowing that that is a short-term rental within the hospitality umbrella, then I think we're, we're, we're on board with that and could certainly be, you know, we would agree to a condition.
You need to actually make any kind of a, add it as a condition or do we trust them?
I don't think it, it doesn't matter what they say because, right? Because if we suggest to, like, let's say they sell in a year or two years after it's all done, like, they can still, short-term rental. I mean, it's just an optics thing at this point here.
Shannon, it?
I would just suggest that maybe, I think we understand your intent and it sounds like the applicant is willing to consider a revision to the conditions. So I, I think to, to simplify things, you may choose to move forward with a motion to approve, subject to the condition that has been, has been discussed. And then the staff will work with the petitioner on getting the exact language and then that'll get carried forward to, to counsel.
Yeah, that makes sense. Cool. So we don't, we don't have to figure out the legal jargon.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, guys?
Go ahead. Move.
I can't.
No, you go for it.
I move to approve the conditional zoning of 197.4 acres as shown on Exhibits A and B from open use and R43 CZ to community shopping dash two CZ, subject to the following conditions. And where we sup...
I think that's where you can just say, subject to a condition that...
That has been discussed, okay. Subject to the condition that has been discussed at this meeting with the applicant, that they should, you know, review the terminology that they're using for short-term rentals and do that with the town staff to come up with a, a way to address that. And I find that the request is reasonable and is in the public interest, is consistent with the town of Woodfin, comprehensive plan and meets the development needs of the community in that request. This is different. It encourages walking and promotes connectivity between uses within the development through an internal network of trails. Number two, it supports new and existing businesses within Woodfin to advance and maintain environmentally and socially sustainable business practices that enhance community life. Number three, it identifies appropriate locations for health and wellness businesses and ensure that these locations are zoned appropriately and adequate infrastructure is available. Number four, it encourages low-impact cluster development that preserves environmentally sensitive areas such as ridge, ridg tops, steep terrain and areas adjacent to streams and creeks. Number five, provides additional housing options with energy-efficient buildings. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three votes it carries.
All right, that's the last item for business.
I was going to say, with that, that concludes our business. So if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
I'll take it in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
We're still live, give me a second.
It's going to be a speed developer. Thank you.